Town Council regular meeting to order, and we will now say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is visitors. Do we have any visitors that would like to speak at this time? Yes?
Yes, actually, I'm Tom Schultz, Chair of the Human Rights 43A Committee on Work and Research. I'm here really for two reasons. I should have been at my ZBA arena tonight, but I actually thought of being able to speak for two reasons. First of all, I just want to, the reason I'm here is because we lost Brendan Saunders, and I just wanted to speak about how meaningful it was to get to know Brendan, and it's a big loss for us. Also, I just wanted to be here for Lori King, who's applied to be going to our committee. Lori reached out to me basically over a year ago, found our committee. She's involved in groups in the area, a group anti-racism, for instance, called ALBA, which myself and David Malilla both have gone to program screen. And anyway, in short, I think Lori is an amazing candidate, and she's a hard worker, very organized. She'll tell you about her background. She's a former retired teacher. She brings so many great skills, so I just wanted to put you in good.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay. Item number three, approval of minutes from May 3, 2023. Do I hear a motion?
Motion?
To approve. Yes, okay.
Well, we just about had a corner there.
Yeah.
You need a motion or a second?
Carrie made the motion, and Tom seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. Item number four is appointments and reappointments, and these, we have three new appointments. One is Lori King for the Human Rights Committee for a term until July 1, 2026. Are you Lori?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you for joining us. Does anybody have any question or comment for Lori?
No, thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. Mr. Schultz already spoke up for her, unless you would like to say a couple of words on her own behalf.
Yeah, I'll say a couple things. I like to talk. Again, I'm Lori King. I live at 10 Marion Lane in Clinton. We moved here five years ago. This is my husband Bruce King. We moved from Rochester, New York, and we moved down here to be closer to family. I have children in Gilbert. I just want you to know that I'm very excited about this opportunity. I bring to it, I have a master's degree in counseling. I'm very interested in equity work, and I saw that in the schools that I worked in in the Rochester, New York area. When I retired, I was a consultant in Manhattan, in the Bronx, in New Haven schools, working with some at-risk schools. So that was kind of where my journey began, about the inequities I saw between rural and urban and suburban, and started doing a lot of reading, Isabella Wilkinson, Deborah Irving, and just been doing a lot of research myself about America and our history. And I am part of the INDAFA group, and just something I'm very passionate in, so I hope that I will live up to Tom's expectations.
All right, thank you. Sounds very promising. Thank you. The second appointment tonight is Sandra Partis.
Would you want to move on that one first, Mr. Chair?
We can, we can. All right, well, I was going to do the three at once.
I make, I make a motion that we approve Lori King for the Human Rights Committee.
I'll second that.
And I guess it's for a term until 7/1/26, because it's coming up for a reappointment anyways in June. So your miles are just extended, I guess.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, motion carries. The second appointment is Sandra Partis. Partis?
Hi.
Hi, and you're here for the Beautification Committee for a term until June 30, 2024. And does anybody have any questions for Sandra?
Will be a great addition, thank you, another master gardener.
Oh, how wonderful. That's great. All right, and since these are both appointments to beautification, can we look at the second one as well? Mary Jo Lanza Latta? Okay. And you also are interested in beauty and beautification. Are you a master gardener as well?
Not yet.
Not yet.
All right. Well, thank you for raising your hand. Do I hear a motion to approve Sandra?
I'll move the appointments to Sandra Partis and Mary Jo Lanza Liotta.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm just checking one thing, because my book's on the shelf.
What?
I believe it's Diane.
Oh, that woman with the questionable letter the other day? Didn't sign it, right?
Correct.
No, I just wanted to make sure there was two vacancies, because as far as I knew it, there was one, but if you remember in our...
Oh, I know what it was, Diane, yeah.
Someone's on the vacancy without putting their name on the bottom.
Yes.
A resignation, I should say.
Yep.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second?
Two vacancies.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nope, motion carries. Okay, now, we have a lengthy list of reappointments. Do I need to read these out loud, each one? All right. This is a list that was provided to us by the DTC with appointments that would be in place as of June, July 1.
These are all reappointments, these are just...
These are all reappointments. Do I need to read these out loud, Carl, or can we just make a motion to approve the reappointments?
Well, I think you should. I think you have to.
Okay, the reappointments are Bertram Schmitz, Larry Lett, Nick Webb, the Conservation Commission until June 30, 2025, Alan Cravitz, Design Review Board alternate seat until June 30, 2026, John Hussani, John May, Richard Jewell, Rob Acamporo for the Economic Development Commission, full seat until June 30, 2027. Are those all full seats? Robert Murdock for the Economic Development Commission, alternate seat until June 30, 2027, Terry Clark, Historic District Commission, alternate seat until June 30, 2028, Jerry Baird, Human Services Advisory Board until June 30, 2026, Bertram Schmitz, Inland Wetlands Commission until June 30, 2027, Michael Valenti, Local Veterans Advisory Committee until June 30, 2025, Chris Pisante and Ron Stapkowski for Park and Rec Commission until June 30, 2027, Paul Malonson, Public Works Commission, full seat until June 30, 2027, John Allen Walker, Shellfish Commission until June 30, 2025, Julie Clark and Terry Clark for the Tree Committee until June 30, 2025, and Matthew Kennedy for the Water Pollution Control Commission until June 30, 2026.
Just a correction, I looked on the list, and John May for EDC is alternate.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so the Economic Development, wait a minute, EDC you said?
Yeah.
Okay.
On the list here, it says alternate.
So John May, Richard Jewell, Rob Acamporo would be full seats till June 30, 2027, and Robert Murdock and John Hussani would be alternate seats until June 30, 2027. Do I hear a motion?
Hang on a second. So they switched?
I don't know, I was just reading off the list that they provided me.
Because the economic development was Teske, Williams, Hussani, Bob Werner, Jewell, Allen, and Acamporo. Hussani was the full. You're putting them on alternate?
No, John May, no. No, John Hussani is a full.
Oh, John May is the alternate. Okay, so let me read that again.
John May is the alternate.
Correct.
All right, okay. So for full seats on the EDC, John Hussani, Richard Jewell, Rob Acamporo, full seats until June 30, 2027. For alternate seats on the Economic Development Commission, we have John May and Robert Murdock.
Correct.
Okay, so, hearing all these reappointments, is there a motion to approve these reappointments?
Can I make the motion?
Do we have a second?
Sure, I'll second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Nope, motion carries. Okay, item number five is a, is a, from the Economic Development Commission. Do we have someone here to give us a report? Yes, thank you.
We have two, and Bob Werner, and I'd like to introduce one of our members, Bob Murdock, who's also, because Bob was not on our last meeting, we appointed him as a team leader for our downtown customer focus.
Thank you.
That was quick.
I was on a business trip, and I answered. I'd like to have Bob just introduce himself and his background, and I'll partner up with him, and then I'll talk to you about where we're processing this.
Sounds good, thank you.
So Bob Murdock, 90 Pratt Road in Clinton, just celebrated his fifth anniversary moving here, so he's with Ohio, and he did five years ago. I was roped into this, but I, that's fine, I'm happy to be a part of the committee. I started out of the committee originally the manager of the firm. I was a non-member, very interested in what was going on in Clinton, I think I was there for like four years before I became a member. Just want to make Clinton better than I found it, that's really my whole approach. I am the president of the Connecticut Convention and Sports Bureau. We are a group that is funded by the state to help bring meetings and trade shows to Connecticut, so anything from NCAA basketball to family reunions and everything in between. So I was a candidate for a trade show, trying to bring sporting events to the state. Been doing that for, been president for about four and a half years, and been working for about nine at this job. So I did, I'm actually part of the tourism group as well, since that's part of my background, my current job, but you know, economic development is again, want to make things better than I found it, and just happy to be part of the team. And we're really all about partnerships and collaborations, where we can't do this really by ourselves, or we're going to partner with people on the council, and other folks in Clinton, that maybe we got the own committee's department, just to, again, move us forward. Our first endeavor is really a listening tour. We were here for a presentation three weeks, four weeks ago, so I'm not sure exactly when I'm time, but, and we got direction from the council that we were going to focus downtown first, for this listening tour, see what people need and what people want, and how we can help. I'm going to pass it to the other Bob at this point?
We've got a lot of Bobs.
You don't have to be Bob to be other committee. But it helps.
This is our workflow process that I'll talk to you about, and this is passing around. At first, I'm real excited that Bob's been, and quite frankly, you know, we've been together on and off, and you never know who you are partnering up with. So I actually looked up what Bob's background was, and I just was like, whoa, this is who we need to help us in our team, and you know, it's one of the things you find when you get involved with groups. We have an eclectic group of intellectual knowledge that we have to learn how to draw on, and to pick up, and as Bob said, we all have to work together on these processes to make Clinton better. We can't do individually, or even as a group, we just don't have the capacity, and we're much stronger if we work together. Being here for the second time now with the town council, I hope this becomes not a regular thing, but we need to do more periodic face-to-face updates, and that's one of our plans, is to, as we go forward with this downtown, what I call Voice of the Customer process, and getting our legs under us, that we periodically would like to come and have face-to-face conversations, so I think we need to do more of that, so that we're not working in a vacuum with regards to where we're going. So that said, I just want to share something, other, some other information with you that directly relates to the workflow process that you have there. It's, it's based on how we've worked to achieve something. This is, as you know, we have an advanced manufacturing partnership in town that we've been working on with our manufacturers in the school for the past three years, and I just want to share some information. We have to produce results when we go off to do something, otherwise it's worthless for us to waste our energy and time. And I want to share this with you because that's, this relates directly to what I'm going to talk about in our process. And I just want to share this with you, because I just got this from Marco, and it has to do with, we just put in another Perkins, for another Perkins grant to get some more additional equipment for the Advanced Manufacturing Center at the school, and I told Marco I was going to steal his wording, because it just blew me. You know, you can work on something, and you're so far in the trees, you really don't always see the forward progress you're making. This is what it's all about. Morgan School has experienced remarkable enrollment numbers in the engineering and manufacturing pathway. Out of a total school population of 528, an astounding 132 students enrolled in the year of 2022 through 2024.
Wow.
Now, it goes on to say, where there are already 183 unduplicated requests for available seats in the same pathway. That's, our goal was to break the myth that manufacturing is a dirty, lousy place, and you have to go to college to have a career. You do not, and we have, this is evidence that even in our early stages, we're just, you know, three years in, including two-year vacancy with the COVID thing, that that's the result we're looking for. We have an open house coming up June 6, at seven o'clock, it's our second one, hopefully you can participate. But this wasn't done just by myself or anyone else. We started off with a small team of five people, that included the manufacturing, the school, myself, and we sat down, not knowing what we're going, where we're going, what we're doing. We started small, and we used a disciplined process, much like what Carl's helped us go through to, that's what we'll talk about in this process. It was very disciplined, it was structured. I was probably part of the cop part of it, to make sure we stayed on course, but it helped us, the process helped us stay focused on a main objective, and we didn't drift from that, and it's helped us all collectively produce something that we never thought we'd be able to do. We need to apply that same process to this downtown customer focus part. This has got to be done right. We cannot go just charging downtown and start interviewing people all over the place. We have to have a disciplined, structured process. Bob's going to lead this. I offered to help support it. I am pretty much buried with the advanced manufacturing process, but I will do some of the backdoor stuff, and make sure that, help Bob with the discipline process and the structure that's helped us be so successful with the manufacturers. So that being said, this is our workflow process that I passed out to you. We've done everything up to the shaded box. Carl has got us this far. This is new for us. I'll be quite frank with you, we have not been disciplined in the EDC. It's drove me nuts and some other people to stay focused, get something done, and then go on to the next. This is a process that will solve that problem, and it could be a model for the rest of the things we need to do, and maybe for other groups, so that we have a more disciplined, connected process. So I'm going to take you right to the black, the black box there, and if there's a, thanks, I don't remember the stuff I put it together. But this is our process workflow, and in the, in the shaded box at the bottom, these are our next steps. We have a first workshop on the 25th, and that's going to be just the beginning of how we find out who we are, where we're going, and what we're going to do. We have a team leader, thank, he was out of town, selected, and we had some fun with that. The next part of our process, to keep it simple, is we need to develop a team and find out who we're going to start with. We have some ideas, we want to get involved with the chamber. Dylan Walters, who I'm reaching out for, we're looking to get a different variety. We don't have to have EDC members. I was not a member of the EDC when we first started, and I got dragged into it, but we're going to have, we need to get a variety of people, and we're going to determine what that is next week, how we get started. We're going to start small, because we have to put the, it's like building a house, we got to get the foundation right before we can build up the next stage. We then have to put what's called a charter. A charter is a document, and that's what we have in the advanced manufacturing. It describes what this problem statement is, the scope of where it is. It's like when you Google to go from here to Hartford, you Google, they tell you, you got to go here, you got to stop here. That's what we're going to put together, we're going to start putting the charter together. It's to make sure we all stay focused on what's most important. It helps us prevent drifting off. If you know you get in a meeting these times, you're supposed to, you sit down to talk about one thing, and you leave an hour later, you talked about every other thing other than, and you waste all that time. Our resources are in, it's just so valuable, we can't. So this is to help us stay focused, so hopefully we can use this tool here, as we did in the advanced manufacturing piece, to help us get focused. So we're going to start on that next week. Then we have to put together, based on the charter, an action list of step number one, step number two, three, four, five responsibilities. Carl's helped with the spreadsheet, a couple of things that he passed along to us, that we can plagiarize, use, and help us get ourselves a fast start. But we're going to have an action item of who, what, where, when, with dates, accountability, so that we can stay on track and make sure that we work towards our objective. One of my experiences in doing this with teams is you start off with not a lot of information, you go with the best of knowledge, and you go in that direction. I think when we finally we get into this deeper, we may find that we may have to change the scope, or some of the information, because of the reality of what we're looking at, or the data tells us something else, and we need to let the process guide us, not our motions, okay? Not our, this is to help keep the people side of it out, yet still leverage the knowledge of the people that are important to the process. So that's the next thing, that's our next step, and then we want to implement the action plan. I'm going to suggest, once we even get it in its rough and down and dirty way, that the team that's been put together come and present that to you guys, so they can see what the action plan, and I think that's invaluable, so that we can get some dialogue back and forth, we're all on the same page. That's going to be part of my recommendations as we go forward. So I have an action plan, and once we put it in place, we'll check it to see if it's, if we're going in the direction we want, and then the other is to revise as needed. So that's where we're going to start next week. One of the most important things we have to do is, this has got to be transparent and open, and we, it's got to, for me, it needs to be posted somewhere where anybody in Clinton can see this, can see the action plans, can see what's going on, and we have to work on, and I think that's something we need to work on, part of that is being here. So this is our action plan, to let you know where we're at, and this is a brand-new process for us, and we need to have what I call aggressive patience. We have, if we ever have a sense of urgency, but we can't outrun ourselves, we have to stay focused to make sure that we achieve the objectives, but we need to get, we need to move forward all the time, we need to move forward. I'm a go-forward person, I know Bob is. Whatever happened in the past means nothing to me. It's just, we're fresh, we're going in this direction, I never looked that way, so we're going, and we're going to take what we have and go forward with it, and for me, this is, the voice of the customer is the most important thing we can be doing. We need to start to hear from them, and the worst thing that we can do is, is get information from them and never respond to them. We're going to have to have our processes in place of how we take action right away, even the simplest things, whatever that's going to be. So that's our approach, I wanted to take tonight to introduce Bob, and our process of where we're at, we'll continuously share this. Again, I think having it be open and visible is very, very important to us as we go forward. That's kind of in a snapshot, what we're doing. Do you have any questions?
It sounds just terrific. Any questions?
No, no, thanks, Bob, for all this work, and for the update.
If you have half the success with this that you had at...
We are going to be successful with this, all right? And I'm confident in the group of people that we have and will have to do that, and I'm like Bob, we want to leave Clinton better, because we touched something.
That's...
You know, that, and I'm alone, I think Bob is too, we have to think five, 10 years out. This can't be instant pudding. If it starts, people want stuff tomorrow, that's not, that's not going to happen.
Right.
That's just not, not going to happen. We have to do this right.
Sounds very promising.
Okay, so, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
And you, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
The floor plan for success, I think it sounds great. Thank you. Item number six is the Chamber of Commerce is requesting an exemption to ordinance 194-4A and 194-5A for these, the three items, the cigar and whiskey gathering, the International Food and Beer Festival, and the Summer Fest and Fireworks. Do we have a motion to approve that, for discussion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Do you have dates for them?
Hmm?
I was asking about dates.
Oh.
Yes, the cigar and whiskey gathering is June 20, the international festival is July 7, and in some of the best cases, August 20.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No.
Now that the budget is passed, we're working on getting behind the scenes to get all that set up in the accounting system, as well as we're working on the year-end close, so that concludes my report. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Sue? Thank you, Sue.
Thank you, Sue.
I'm just curious about one thing, Sue. You said it was the same as last year, and it just is odd, is it typical at this time, I guess with two months left, because this is the end of April, that...
You only have 79.7 of the expenses? Is that typical? Yes, yes, that's right on par. I mean, 10 months would be 83 percent, you know, we're at 79, there's a lot of things that come in a year-end, we'll be doing year-end accruals and things like that, so... Yeah, yeah, typical. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Sue. Okay, and the next item is the chairman's report. I do not have a report to submit as the acting chair for tonight, so the town manager, town managers' report is next.
So you have my written report in the agenda packet, so a little bit of follow-up that was necessary on pickleball, based on what the council had heard at your prior two meetings. So I did follow up with Bo to get an understanding of what was actually discussed by the Park and Rec Commission, make sure... rec commission, make sure we had it all accurate. This is a layout of pickleball on the basketball court at IROC. You'll see that the configuration is three pickleball courts on the basketball court. It's currently under cost estimating right now, so the courts would take up the existing basketball court, bleed out a little bit into the parking lot. And once we have the final cost report, then that'll help finalize the number that's set aside under ARPA to pay for this. There were discussions at your last two meetings about replacing the court at the beach. That is actually not where parking rec was going. It was not to replace this court. It was simply to put hoops out where the bocce court is, which is beefing up what is basically there now in that first parking area. There's just a hoop and a free throw line. It's just for shooting baskets. It's not for playing competitive sports. So they'll be looking to reproduce the same thing. So it's not a full court, because a full court would never fit in the area as proposed. It's just a hoop and a free throw line for casual hoop.
People use that all the time.
Yeah. So, and that would give the parking rec commission the ability to put the 100% of the parking lot in, in activity. So next step is we're waiting for the engineer to give us the cost estimate, and then that sets us in motion for making sure we have the right number when we go into the public hearing on the 21st of June. Additional items that are kind of in the report or not. The Middlesex County Revitalization Committee Grant Program. I reported on this in my last report. We're moving into the due date for those grants, the first round of grants to come in. The MCRC has state monies that they're looking to spread out over five years to help small businesses. There's 14 applications in at present. One of those is a Clinton-based business. So you've got a little bit of diversity across the Middlesex County. Obviously, there's a little bit more of a concentration of Middletown businesses asking for assistance than once you get a little further afield. I reaffirmed with Paul that, Orsini, that we want to make sure that Clinton was aware of it. So he's done it in two email blasts out to chamber members. I also advised him of another small business grant program that Sektor, the southeastern organization, has available, which includes Clinton. So that's another program that small businesses could take advantage of. The original ARPA allocations in all their grant agreements, the nonprofits had to provide follow-up reports for what they've done with the money. So only a handful remember that they owed those reports. Others have been chasing to get me reports for how they spent their money, just so that we're keeping tabs on how the dollars were allocated across the community once they were given over to different organizations. Previously, we discussed submitting a project to our senators under the congressionally-designated spending program, formerly referred to as earmarks. So we submitted a $600,000 project for the public safety radios to our two senators in their online application portal. So our ask has been pushed through from the local office, so we made it past the Connecticut screen. It now goes off to the Senate Appropriations Committee, which would be reviewing these allocations on a national level. And then we would know later in the year whether or not we made it past that screen. And ultimately, it has to be worked into the federal budget at any rate to make sure it's funded. So it's moving, and then we'll know later whether or not we've been successful in securing funding. I did make reference to the Pearson RFP. We had a site walk earlier this week to see who all would be interested in it. There were an awful lot of attendees, but they were professionals that were supporting specific development, developers, so it was really more development teams. It looks like there's probably three teams that are interested in the property. They've got a fair amount of homework to do to figure out how to make what is an interesting building and a potentially interesting project work and viable. They're asking for some follow-up information that I'm trying to put together to help them better understand and characterize the property. They're looking for septic information and hazardous materials documents and the like. So there's some additional information to follow up with all the proposers, so that they have what we have to better understand the building. And then the three teams, it looks like I would anticipate they would follow through with potential proposals. Figuring out where the capital is going to come from is the biggest challenge for them, not so much for us. But we have to wait and see what we get when they come in. So be hopeful that we have some positive traction on our, on our project. One developer I did speak to before the site walk was not present at the site walk. So that's not a bad thing, because we do have, we do have a good response thus far. So there'll be more to come on that as time rolls out. And that's about it.
Is there a time, is there another time constraint in the RFP process? Do they?
Yeah. So the next milestone would be the deadline to submit questions. So there's this ongoing collecting of questions that they're firing at me, so I'm compiling answers. And then now, after the site walk, putting together documentation, I will push out to them answers to all the questions that have been put forward, so that they all have the same information. So there's a deadline for them to submit that. After that deadline, the next milestone would be the actual date of submission.
And do we, do you have a date for that?
Yeah, that's in early June. So once you get to that point, then we would have to navigate the path forward from there. So how many proposals do we actually have to evaluate? And then a review process, if there's more than one rating and ranking to determine who seems to be the one we want. You may want to have presentations made, so there's other decisions to be made, depending on how many proposals we get. If we get one, it's a little easier. If we get three, there's a little more work that has to be done.
Well, honestly, I think it sounds very promising. Are you, is that the end of your report?
That would be the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Carl? Okay, thank you. Then moving along. Item number 12, council discussion. Is there anything anybody has on their mind to bring up? At this point, then I would, we had to postpone the fund balance workshop that was supposed to be tonight, but due to the inability for several members to get here, we have decided to try and reschedule it for June 8th at 6:00 PM. Would that work for the, this group? Is that before the next, no, that's not a meeting.
It's a Thursday.
It's a Thursday. Okay. So.
It's an evening, though. I can give that.
All right.
Yeah, and Chris, a Thursday, so good with him.
All right.
I already checked with him.
Okay. Okay. So Thursday, June 8th at 6:00 PM. Do we need a motion to?
No.
Okay. Would that, that would work? We'll put that on the calendar for the fund balance workshop. Okay. So any other council discussion besides that? No? Yes? No? Okay. Number 13, town council committee liaison reports. Does anybody have anything to bring forward?
P&amp;Z was pretty interesting. There, there was a lawyer who was presenting an idea to P&amp;Z of a developer putting in 40 apartments.
Where the Victorian Village is now, near Grove Gardens. And it was just a, it was just a sort of a question asking, just a sort of a, they're trying to get response, trying to find out what it was that P&amp;Z would ask, and they did get questions. Other than that, that was pretty.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Well, I attended the EDC meeting. Would you like to hear about?
I think it was covered very professionally already. Thank you. Dennis?
Yeah, the, the police commission, I attended it last week. Everything's rolling along real good. Happy to report that the hiring of the woman police, police officer is going well. She's on board. Of course, she's from another department, so the time for her to spend in training will be shortened quite significantly. And that's about it.
That's good. Okay, thank you.
Are there open positions still?
Yeah, no, not yet.
Okay.
They will be short.
You had some retirements coming up, didn't you?
Well, they got a couple coming up, yeah.
Okay.
Anytime we don't have to put someone through the entire process is a good.
That's a good thing.
Yeah. All right. Okay. If there's nothing else, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move it.
7:53. Exactly. We have a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.